To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to know roll call, Jason. Well, moving right on here. Board correspondent report, Pat.
Uh huh. Okay. There is some money from the CARES Act that is supposed to be, it's for education stabilization, for funding for K-12 schools. From what I understand, it's supposed to be determined like we do Title I based on need. However, the use of part of education has kind of put a little twist into their interpretation of that law. Or that whatever, money, in saying that it should be based, because we have to share that with private schools. So they're saying it should be based on total enrollment rather than need eligibility. So that means a lot of that more money is going to be going to the private schools that probably don't actually, maybe they need it, I'm not sure. But it's, it's going to be a lot more money allocated to them now. There was a new program called What Is Speak Up, Speak Out? It is a, the Speak Up, Speak Out is a threat reporting system that will launch in the fall of 2020. And to Wisconsin youth, when they think there's a threat to themselves or classmates or to the school, then they can report that. See, who better to know what's going on in your school than your kids? So they're going to be doing that. There's going to be some, you know, where you're in, working at your school, there's going to be some education involved with both the students and our staff. But that sounds like a pretty good program.
Pat, who is, who's going to be getting the reports? If they speak up, if they out, I'm assuming there's some kind of a hotline or something?
Yeah, there is a website, it's going to be, come to a website, and there's going to be a threat assessment consultation. Information forming, school building in your district, and all things that you have to do. But there's going to be more information on that later.
Okay.
On how, how, I mean, the data, who's going to collect the data?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see how that works. I suppose there'll be more on it later. There's more money from the CARES Act, about forty-six million dollars in addition to the three hundred and fifty-four that we, that the schools originally got. Governor Evers is going to prioritize students in districts that have the highest promote learning needs and have the most significantly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And then there is, as you can all imagine, tax revenue is down for the month of May. It's not as bad as what it was for the month of April. But they haven't really said anything yet about how schools are going to, you know, deal with the funding of that and how that's going to work for the 2021 fiscal year. And then? The DPI, you probably saw that today with their guidelines for COVID. Right? Eighty pages?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
It was not very entertaining reading. But I mumbled through all the, all the eighty pages. I think, I don't know what they didn't cover. It looks like they covered everything, and a lot of it looked like it went through the CDC, a lot of it was the CDC guidelines. But the CDC also advised that all decisions about following their recommendations should be made in collaboration with local health officials and other state authorities who can help assess the current level of severity needed based on levels of COVID-19, community transmission, and the capabilities of local public and healthcare systems, along with relevant factors. So they give you that option to work with your own, with your own community based on what your needs are. So I thought that was encouraging. I'm done.
Questions or comments for? All right, we will keep going. Board CISA report, Mick.
Uh, yeah, our convention was pushed back two months, so the annual convention will be July eighth at six thirty. So hopefully we'll have a forum for that. We talked briefly about the fall meeting, they're not sure if they're going to have that. Sue Today, who sits on the WSB board, also wanted our input on convention in January. My comment was, if I have to wear masks, count me out, not going. Actually, thank me for my comments, so. They talked about the Title IX policy, Title IX policy and our need to redo it. We have our do's and don'ts. Just threw that out there. They are opening the Phase One and reopening the CISA building. We did get the contract for the Chavoyan Leadership Academy, we'll be facilitating that. Also, the CISA VII Virtual Education Service is up and going, or you can get your virtual, do a virtual school through them, but they stay on our account. Brilliant is piloting the redefining ready report card program for us. They're also taping with the idea of a virtual meeting on school board law for board members. Which I thought would be advantageous and helpful, so. And just, does everybody get the school board, the CISA VII notes? He sends it out, everybody gets it in email?
Yes.
Is that home from Jeff? Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure. That's it.
So that virtual school situation, is that something we might be able to take advantage of?
Well, we have our, for our own anyway, so.
Okay.
It's going to cost so much, we talked about it last month, it's going to cost so much for Stewie.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's actually, I guess, services or an administration fee, but they stay on your, you know. There's similar program that Keel School District was launching, where they just take a percentage of the, whatever the cost would be, and then you get to maintain your enrollment numbers, so.
Lots of options out there.
Yeah, if the school district doesn't have those capabilities or isn't comfortable with it, I think it's a, it's a good avenue to go down. If you have the capabilities and you have a promising success from March till now, I don't necessarily know that it'd be advantageous, because why, why do you have that capability?
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we are now at the point, citizens' delegation to be heard. This is call-in only. I don't know if there is anybody on the phone that had anything they would like to bring up, but this would be the time that they would do that. So if there is anyone, I would need their name and their topic. Again, anybody on the phone, name and topic. All right, I don't hear anybody, so moving right on to board president announcements. Don't have a lot to say, I think, as everything else, the Algoma Area Education Foundation Gulf outing was officially canceled. That is the main moneymaker for the scholarships. So we had always sponsored a hole. Now, we're not going to be having the Gulf outing, but any sponsors that are still willing to contribute to the scholarship program are certainly welcome. So if any, we always covered a hole, which was about twenty dollars a piece for us. I don't think we have to make a board decision, but if any individuals want to continue that contribution, I'm sure that the Algoma Area Education Foundation would be appreciative. We certainly didn't want to go after all the local businesses for donations and things while they're struggling as well. So, so 2021, I guess, will be our next Gulf outing. The other thing I just wanted to just reinforce, I mean, we are all wearing masks. People don't seem to have, there's a lot of people who don't have the understanding of what the masks are for. The masks are for protection of others. It really, it's a protection of others and the environment that you're in. So, I mean, you're really doing a service for everyone else when you are wearing one. The only ones that are actually a protection for yourself are the N95s. And for, you know, most situations, that's just not necessary. But if everybody wears a mask, then everybody else is protected, the environment is protected. Certainly now that we've gotten to be nice weather and outside, that's so nice for everyone. But still distancing and masking can't just be stopped. Numbers are going up everywhere and we need to get a handle on this thing, so. I want to thank everyone that is wearing a mask. And that's all I have to say, so we'll move on to administration reports.
Well, I guess I would start with, I think everybody recognizes the complexity of how we move forward. Sitting where I'm sitting is a really daunting task. If you read Education Forward, the DPI publication, to the WIAA publication, if you notice, everything comes down to add the district administrator's directions. And I, I guess I want to just say that again, that all of us that are making decisions, and not just myself, are going to need a tremendous amount of support moving forward, because there are obstacles and challenges every single place we turn. And regardless of what we do or not do, we will have people be active in expressing their thoughts. Which, if we thought March eleventh to now was a challenge, moving forward will probably be three times the challenge. And I know that every administrator here has been working their tail off to try and do the absolute best that we possibly can and keep up with eighty-five page documents being dropped on our desk and expected to know every detail of those in three, four dollars. And then we get contradicting pieces of information that don't help us at all, because what it does is informs a certain segment of the population with inaccurate information. And then we spend all this time trying to dispel those rumors when we should be working on how we can collectively move forward. And then frankly, July first obviously is the number-one target for everybody right now, because they all, and I don't want to say they all, but the vast majority of individuals seem to think that after July one, then everything is open. And everything is going to go back to normal, which simply isn't the case. So I have the great honor of also being president of the faculty conference this year. So I have been quite vocal about how we handle July to August first will be critical in how we start the school year, if we start the school year, and how that school year will ultimately go. Because there are so many moving parts right now. We need to get people as educated and up to speed as we possibly can, while also being able to try some things out. And I think the Wellness Center is a great example of that for us locally. Nobody else has opened, and we did. And I think our approach has always been to not necessarily camp out on either end of the spectrum, but figure out how do we find common ground? How do we find a place to say, here's how we're going to start? And here is when we're going to communicate, and here is what we're looking for. And I have to say, it's gone really well. So that is the process that we will likely follow. Certainly from this school district perspective, but also the process that I am advocating for that we follow on a somewhat of a regional approach, and certainly a conference approach, because we don't need an outlier, we don't need all these different things going on. What we need is some common understanding of this is how we move forward. Because an understanding of how allows people the autonomy to make local decisions. Because I'm also not ignorant of the fact that Algoma will inherently experience things differently than other communities. And we will need the autonomy and the flexibility to do things differently. So I don't want to handicap somebody from making individual decisions, but I also feel strongly in the fact that we need to at least start and move along as collaboratively as we can, so that we can minimize all of those kind of external forces taking us off course. And the administrators know this, but I've been talking for probably weeks now about we have to kind of get rid of the noise in order to focus on what we have to do and make sure that we are doing the best possible things that we can for our staff and our students and our community, knowing full well that we're not all going to agree on everything. That's, that's just the reality of all this. So it's, it's complex, it's moving. I think you see a very vast spectrum of opinion on it. I can say that we will make sure that we are following a process and have evidence and not rush to make or open things when we're not ready for that. Because I think that balanced approach is what we have to hang our hat on moving forward, so. And frankly, I think it's working. The Wellness Center is a great example of that. I think the Child CARE is a little bit different, kind of an animal there, but seeing some positive things there as well. So that will likely kind of parlay into that July one to August one framework of being strategic about how we communicate, where are we communicating about, what are we designing for? I think all of that stuff is super important. And I think maybe a thirty or forty thousand foot view of that is what we're trying to do here locally is look at this through an opportunist lens. In the sense that some of these recommendations are not bad, because they are actually going to allow us to do some things that we've been talking about doing for four and five years. Now is just the perfect opportunity to do it. So I don't, I don't want to be super negative about it. I want to actually look at this and say, how do we maximize every local asset, every partner, so that we can weather this storm? And then ultimately, I think, organize and be strategic about how we move forward long-term, so. That's kind of where I, my COVID-19 update. Very broad, but just kind of being transparent about where we're at, with group and individually as well.
It will be very helpful if, especially our close districts, can have some semblance of similar policy in getting going.
So we have a meeting tomorrow with the principals that I lead and the athletic directors as well. And then on Wednesday, we have a superintendents meeting where we will hopefully endorse a plan that I have helped put together about how we can collectively do that. Now, I also can't guarantee you that every single school district is going to say absolutely yes. But so far, more are in favor of that than those who are not, so.
But it'll just reduce confusion all the way around.
And I think you see that right now, because you could go from one community to the next, it could be totally one-eighty. And as we get closer and closer to the school year, or even really fall athletics, how even, how that looks, there needs to be some type of consistency there. And frankly, the WIAA recommendations don't provide that. They just say it's up to you to make the decision on what you feel, you know, your current state of appearance is. So I don't, I don't, I don't think any of the local schools are real impressed with that. And I understand their position, but I also understand that leadership is pretty good right now. And I would appreciate that.
I know, I know a student there talked about band and music. Well, you know, practice outside if possible, well.
And I, and I.
That's kind of foolish if it's ten to zero.
Yeah, to talk a little bit about that, I think Jen and Dave have been really good, and Reagan have all processing that, right? So there are certainly recommendations on size and all of those things that go along with it. And when you have a hundred and forty kids in a band, like we do in a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-person high school, that's not going to happen, right? So we have to serve those kids differently. And I think Jen and Dave have been good about thinking outside the box on how they can do that. But are people going to see a hundred and forty people in a band? No. Not until we get to a point where it's safe to do that, so.
So what, do you do a tough case, you can't be in that, is that what?
No, I'm saying that most of it will be in small groups, it'll be individualized, it'll be kind of different scenarios.
Do you utilize a gym maybe?
Maybe in some capacity, but you're still going to have some restrictions on size of groups. You know, much like the sport stuff, I mean, it's limited to ten people. So you can have ten people, but then you would need, if you can have fifty people there, you'd have to have five adults, and you'd have to have a whole lot of distance between those five groups. But consider that, so, consider a school district that has ten thousand kids, how they can do it. And that's not even considering the transportation or anything like that.
With Pan, it still even comes down to what instrument is being played. I mean, you don't want to be anywhere near the flute section because of the way that the breath is concentrated and expelled into the environment. And that's a problem. These string instruments are better, but. It's a, it's, it's a.
Ready?
Yes, Dave?
Could you ask the people to speak up a little bit more, John, it's really hard to hear and.
I. Yeah, the trouble with masks is, is we probably aren't speaking loudly enough, so we'll try and make that effort, thank you.
I can hear you very well.
Okay.
But, I mean, you're right, and I think those are things that have to be taken into consideration and ultimately, we have to design around that. And it's, it's no different than all the sports that they're telling us, oh yeah, go ahead and go ahead and start. But the whole point of the sport is contact, which you can't have. So on some level, it's all this false hope, right? And what I don't like about it is it's all followed right back to me. So whatever I decide, I'm the evil person. And that's, that's the complexity of all this, that's the, that's the difficult part of all of this. Because it gets deeply personal really fast. And people don't know what to say.
What's, what's the warrant policy with the unbussing?
Um, we have an upcoming meeting. But I, I can tell you that I was on a conference call with Joel Kitchens, and that's one of the number-one concerns that we have in school districts, is bussing routes, availability. Are they going to clean the buses? Who's responsible for that? And I do know that there is some concern on behalf of the legislature, because even though we weren't, we were in virtual session, it's not like they didn't get paid. They, they got paid for that whole time. And that matters, right? So as moving forward, and I think we have to be very transparent about what our requirements of a contractor are going to be. Because the first thing that comes to mind is flexibility. We have four bus routes in this district. If you read anything in this eighty-seven pages, four bus routes isn't going to cover one day. Right? But then what does that look like in terms of dollars? And then what does that look like for a company that already can't find bus drivers? So once you get into the details of anything, it becomes so complex and so multifaceted that it is, it's, everything impacts everything. And it's planned for everything with no information. That's challenging.
On a thirty-passenger school bus, how many students could ride, given the guidelines that you've been giving?
Ten.
Ten, so you reduced it by two-thirds.
So that doesn't take into account, though, like probably some of our highest cost, or we're transporting individuals with specialty needs. What happens if we have to, you know, use a cohort model, and these kids are in school while these kids are virtual? It's only going to, you know, multiply those costs exponentially. And quite frankly, I, I wouldn't want all of those companies right now. And I, I have heard that some of the bus companies are telling school districts, this is what you're going to have, that's it. So that's where some of the guidelines and stuff are almost, they're not practical. It's not.
Bingo. Looks good on paper, doesn't it?
It's not, can't do it. But the problem is, is like, whose names on the document when something happens?
The other thing, I, I was bringing this to next attention today, and I think this is something to be stated, but I think people have various opinions about COVID-19 in general, and that's okay. But one thing I think that we need to really stress the narrative of is when someone contracts COVID-19. So a friend of mine who lives in Kiwanee has been sharing her story, she has COVID-19 right now. She is on quarantine, her family is on quarantine, and everybody she's been exposed to is on quarantine. When we think about a small community, if, yes, I know our numbers are low, but we cannot afford to have one. If one of our administrators gets COVID, we need to consider what that looks like. So it's, that's the stress I want to say to our community is I understand everybody's opinions and the divide that that's bringing to everybody. And it's real, it's happening, it's here, it's in Kiwanee, it's in Algoma. And just one person having it, the people who are on quarantine, that quarantine doesn't even start until her symptoms end. So we have to think of the reality in a small community of what that brings to our local economy, not even just our school system or athletics. And that's where I. And that's where I come from. I know it's the doubles and the details, and we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we, we have to educate people on that. We have to be educators on that simple fact, so.
I mean, there's, what I could do is there's no margin of error.
Yeah.
Right? So we could go from fully operational to.
Settle.
Because you can't, you literally can't do it. And I mean, one staff member.
Think about that, one person in here.
And in this environment, you're done. And it's not for 14 days, it's gonna be 30, 45, who knows? And then we start thinking about, how do you, how do you then come back from that? Right? And it, it's scary. And I think when you look at, all you have to do is look at some of the major college programs right now that were in a real big hurry to get student athletes back, and now they're going, oh my God. Because I think what they realize is while they were wanting to be, wanted to jump the gun, that jumping the gun might have costed them the whole ball left. And that's the reality. And we're not any different, right? And that, that's, that's the hard part of it all, is how much are people going to be able to endure? Because you already see in a really short amount of time what has happened.
So what do the contingency plans look like for administration, for the different departments, for flexibility? I mean, it's, it's one thing to be exposed, it's another thing to experience the virus. And there are some folks that don't necessarily come back very quickly. And that does not necessarily age-related. So, but, you know, if we're being responsible, we have some kind of contingency plan where it doesn't come to a wringing halt and they slow down a bit, but we have people who know that they're next up.
Yeah. I think that's where the scenario planning that I have found comes into play where if you read between the lines and how they're asking you to set things up, is to set it up in small groups so that in the event something happens, you could quickly wrap your arms around that group, and then it doesn't impact this, the broader group. And that inherently has its challenges too, because how do we educate 740 students with our current policy? Because it's not like people are lining up and saying, here's extra money to go hire more teachers. All they're saying, listen, is you really should only have one teacher and less than 10 students. Okay? So you all know our class sizes. Where are all these extra teachers coming from? And then what happens, say, teacher doesn't even get COVID, what happens when they're sick? You're gonna bring a sub in that doesn't exist, that you're gonna have no idea where they've been? I'm not. So now you don't have that capacity unless, we have some things that we're gonna talk about in close personnel. Because all this stuff has to be redesigned because of exactly what you're talking about. And at Katie's level is drastically different than at my level. She's dealing with three- and four-year-olds, you know, sometimes they deal with that, right? But I have a totally different lens that I look at things up here. And I, you know, she knows this, but every time I just think about that and I'm going, well, it's, there's really not this end-all, be-all solution. Because when you come up with something, you go, what about this? And then Katie sitting right next to her is going, what about the kids that are already struggling? How are we gonna do that? Right? And then you have Jason saying, what happens when the federal government cuts our funding? Because you know that's gonna happen. That's all you're, that's all you're improving. So again, I'm trying to be very opportunistic and think about strategic collaborative partners where we can try to structure things in a way so that when something happens, we can get our arms around it as fast as we possibly can without impacting our broader system. Knowing full well that part of that solution might be literally me saying, we're virtual for the next three weeks, and it's gonna be that fast? I mean, and I think honestly, that freaks people out. It does, and I get it, but I'm also very aware that that's how quickly things will happen. And I mean, all I have to do is look at major college programs right now. They're all, it's all happening. And if they don't have a plan, they're exposed, you know? Look at all, you know, there's some very, very high-profile courses that are in some very, very troubled waters right now because they just ignored things. And then their players are saying, are you kidding me? You know, you didn't, you didn't have those plans? You didn't have our safety in mind? So.
That's a tough place to be, uh, because you're going to be talking to parents who are relying on school being in session, some way, shape, or form, and be able to get some routine down so they can add routine to their lives. And, you know, in some cases, it's, it's a matter of they go to work to keep food on the table, the lights on, and the gas running. But if you have to be able to pivot on a moment and say, we're now all virtual, and now we've got the community scramble.
Yep.
Oh my goodness, what are we gonna do? Uh, but knowing that upfront, hopefully there can be some contingency plans with hopefully relatives, other family members, somebody who's close that, you know, can be able to step in. But it's not gonna be easy.
And I think that's where the communication piece that I'm trying to drive home is that I wanna be able to communicate in two-week kind of timeframe from here on out. Just because I think people need to get used to not planning really any more than that. You know, and I've said this to, you know, this for everyone. I, I'm not thinking about September right now. I'm, I'm literally thinking about how do we have the best July that we possibly can? Because the best July is gonna inform potentially the best August. And then meanwhile, I have all this noise around me, but what's gonna happen in, in spring of '21? I don't, you know, and people get upset about that, and it's like, I don't have a crystal ball. So I think you're right, and I think that's where we have to have, people need to get used to communicating this way and then having resources for them if we have to pivot, right? Because that's difficult. I'm, I'm a parent, right? If we have, so we need to have those things in mind, and we need to have that voice represented in our plan so that we know that when it happens, that we're not hitting the fall ball three miles out of the stadium.
Not that I wanna add to your job at all, but that's just dealing with the parents. What about the employers in town? You know, have, have we, can we reach out to them and say, this is not gonna be an easy time? You know, how will you deal with employees who suddenly have to be home for two weeks to?
We can stay in close proximity with that. I mean, we have a very good pulse, especially in our manufacturing businesses that employ a lot of our parents. We've been very close to their procedures. I thought MCC's been, they were way ahead of the ball game in March, and their CEO was not changing anything until after the January 1st. So a lot of their corporate office employees are staying home indefinitely or until after that time when they can readjust. They're an international company, so they see kind of what's happening all over. But Precision Machine, um, CTI, they will, and, I mean, at the table talking about this. They do know the complexity of it. What happens if one of their employees gets it? They're gonna have to shut down. They can't afford to do that. So I think you're right, John, we need to be, I love that we can be opportunistic and best time, and I also like the position of where Aloma is. We have a lot of partnerships, both locally, regionally, and nationally, and we have to continue to tap into them to first, to survive this difficult war. That's, we need to have allies, because this, what's coming ahead is not gonna be fun, and it's not gonna be fun for NIP, especially the divide that could occur. But we need to make decisions, and we need to all be, you know, on one page collectively with our allies, with our partners, because it's gonna be inevitable, and we have to accept that. So I agree, you're right, and I think this, as always, school connects to that. It's a reality.
Yeah, you can't pull any one thread and that number out of someplace else.
Yep.
And I think that's why you also see in every other paragraph is, you know, you should know the culture of your community, right? So without saying any more than, you know, late November, what happens in Aloma? Right? So that's a whole nother piece of that, which a lot of our community members look forward to. Right? So it's understanding that and making sure that we get in front of that, and we have been clear in our communication and, and clear in our purpose about why we're doing things. Because when we, when we, you know, only these people can come, is not a phrase that's gonna go well in Aloma. Right? We saw that with graduation. Right? So we can expect those things, and then we can plan for them. And we also need to understand that there, each group will throw their own nuances at us, you know? And we will have to be able to balance that and, and.
Does their nuance come with suggestion?
It, it can. What I've gotten up till now is just, it's one end or the other. So I think the nuances are gonna come when, you know, we're making decisions primarily for students and staff and parents and things like that, but we know how that impacts families. We have grandparents and stuff that are equally, if not more, active as a child, you know? So I, you know, we're a little bit away from kind of having a group come together, but I, I think once that group comes together, I think that people can then see that we are willing to, to listen to nuances if they can back that up. You know, because I told you so, it just doesn't get covered. Because we, we have that struggle with employees too, right? Where you ask them to do something, and then I have to remind them, my name is still not that. So if you refuse to listen to me, it's mine. And then drastically behavior changes, you know? But that's gonna be the same, same thing with community members, because they just need to understand that and know that.
Well, the other thing, Nick, though, is that, I mean, just like you said, it would have been nice to have a little bit more leadership direction from the, from the sports thing, so that it's not, we're the local bad guys if we make decisions people that, that they don't like. But at the same time, you're gonna have to be able to just state, this is our policy. And we, as a board, have to all come together to decide what it is that we wanna do, and, and then collectively, you know, just say, this is it. I mean, you have to have security in saying, this, I'm just following policy. And then, and then if we're consistent, so, yeah, we as a board have to decide what, how we move forward and what we're comfortable with, and, and then support each other with it.
I don't think you guys wanna be sitting in those chairs if it starts unraveling.
Oh.
You know what I'm saying? Nope. But that's how.
I've, I've had angry mobs.
It's unraveled before.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think we wanna go there.
No, we don't. No, the idea is, like you say, if we can try and educate people as to the reasoning and how we came to our decisions and how it impacts everybody else, I mean, um, yeah, that it.
One of the things I've been hearing in the community is, especially in the school perspective, is that, you know, these are just recommendations that were given. And I, I mean, clarity to that is yes, they are just recommendations, because this is not gone to the Supreme Court yet for anybody who has ran into an issue, who's about to sue somebody because they contracted COVID-19 at a softball game in a classroom. I mean, that day is coming. So these are recommendations because, one, they don't clearly know how to guide anybody because they've never had a pandemic, they're better at the next one. But I say that because, yes, they are just recommendations, but if we don't follow recommendations at this point in a public entity for the health and safety of others, I don't wanna be in that position of not following recommendations. So I think that that has, I think there's education in our small conversations for our community, because I don't think they quite understand in a school perspective or healthcare perspective, I've talked to nurse friends, they too have recommendations.
Well, those aren't recommendations. The hospital uses recommendations to make a policy that they are, you don't follow this policy, you're outta here, you know? So yes, it starts with recommendations, but then at some point, people have to just say, okay, this is how we stand on this, whether it's a hospital, whether it's a grocery store, whether it's a school. And then however they have decided has to be consistent, and yeah, so, education.
We talked about that at the CISA meeting, you know, with people suing, you know, because I got COVID here, I got COVID there, but lawyers are really gonna jump on this because they will pull your bank records, they will pull your driving records. They'll say, well, you were at A&amp;W and you were in church, and you spent, I see you spent at the mall, and now you proved to me that you got it in school. So I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's out there, but it would be very hard to prove. My other question is, do you know what the propio schools are doing with this?
Um, I haven't been in contact with any of them, and I haven't.
Okay, because I think St. Paul's is running their summer program.
I've heard stuff that I don't wanna say it because I don't know if it's factual. I just heard.
Yeah, I just heard.
I just heard it was opposite of things that we were saying, so, which I don't know if that's facts, so.
Okay, I was just wondering if we have been in contact with them at all, because they face the same stuff we do.
Yeah, we all face the same stuff.
Uh, B. Summer projects, maybe after the meeting, I could take you down. I'll just pop the door open the way of the room, and it's pretty fascinating to see how different it is. So that project's going on well. Outside projects are gonna start up. You're gonna see them be in your basement here as we move through the summer. But overall, all that stuff is going quite well. I don't think I have to go too much into scenario planning. I think we can kind of link that to Pope. The only thing that I would just add there again is just consistency, right? And I'm starting my 10th year here, and I think we've said it every single time we've ever been in a meeting or it's come up, but a unified approach. But a unified approach is just how we have to move forward. So I'm confident that we can do that. I'm confident that together, certainly gonna learn a lot. But I certainly think we can lean on each other a little bit too and get through it. Come on the other side, in a much better place, so I'm confident that we can do it.
Okay, any questions or further comments for Nick at the moment? Okay, moving on to you, Katie.
All right, a quick summer school update. Obviously, summer school looks a lot different this year. We are running it virtually. Engagement in that is also a little different than in years past. We have 44 students who are taking classes. We have six classes that are running. The classes have anywhere between 11 and 15 students each. So it's definitely a smaller group this year, but from what I've seen in the classes that I've been in and what has been posted, it's been amazing as usual. We, you know, it kind of was a really quick turnaround in how to figure out how to best provide that opportunity to students. But I was really impressed with the teachers who just kind of, you know, again swiftly changed the plans and how they were gonna do things and provided that opportunity for students. Going along with that, Nick had mentioned that we opened the childcare on June 15, the same day as the wellness center. And then we just recently made the decision to jumpstart, be held in person at school. And that'll start July 20th and run for three weeks. The reasoning for that is kind of a couple of things, you know? Obviously, we've had some success now opening with the younger students and childcare on a small scale. And we kind of wanted to scale that up just a little bit with even more students. So that we could kind of practice some of our procedures and just kind of make sure that we are well-prepared and well-equipped for what fall possibly could look like. And we have students that we wanna connect with as well. So again, the original plan was for us to hold that virtually as well. But given how things have evolved, we feel like we are ready to hold that in person. It'll look definitely very different. We're really working right now on figuring out our arrival and dismissal procedures for that. You know, obviously typically we have those kids come and they just all gather in the entryway there by the main office. So that's kind of off the table. Teachers are gonna be meeting the kids outside. One of the classes are gonna be held outside just to, you know, give students that freedom to be out there without having to always worry about masks. Which for the younger students is definitely a concern that a lot of, a lot of people hold. So we're gonna be in touch about that, but I'm really excited that, you know, we're moving in that direction. And, you know, the teachers are on board with that and they're very open-minded. And, you know, they've been helpful in the brainstorming process as well and how to make that work safely and also to minimize risk.
How many kids are involved in the jumpstart?
Well, the registration will go out this Friday, so we don't know yet. But when we sent out the initial summer school survey, there were about plus of 40 parents who had expressed interest in virtual jumpstart. So we're actually pushing their registration out to those parents specifically to see if they would be interested. And then the teachers had some recommendations of students who they felt would be a good idea to engage, yeah, in July. So that's kind of how we're gonna work that. We have four teachers, so we'll put around 40 kids or so, possibly a little bit more. But that's kind of what our goal is for a soft opening of the elementary school. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. We've also been working on filling some elementary teacher positions. So we had an open position in third grade. In interviews in the beginning of June, we offered the position to Sandy Hager, obviously pending school approval. But she, she was here with us when everything happened with COVID-19. She was long-term, she was a long-term self before Tammy Shu, when she was on her third degree. So she took over, I'd say, the first week of March for Tammy. And then 10 days later, we were running virtually. So not only did she have to try to build that connection with the kids, she was also solely responsible for learning through this whole process with us. So she did a phenomenal job in staying connected to the students. She taught daily online. So that was, you know, the kind of that she needs to meet. She said, this is the best experience I've ever had. She said, this is the best professional development. I learned more than I have in these last few weeks than I have, you know, in however many years of teaching I've had. She said, this is amazing. So, you know, I just love that mindset. She's also one, one of the teachers of summer school. She's teaching a virtual summer school class, science education. So hopefully you'll have a chance to meet her when we can start bringing some people in, which we did offer that to her. And then just this, just today, we started 4K teacher interviews for a third 4K teacher. We've had our eye on our 4K numbers for a while now. As of right now, for next year, we have 47 4K students that we have enrollment boards for. So there's a couple that we haven't heard from yet. And obviously, you know, there's always ones that we're not even sure, you know, they just, they sign up right before school starts. So definitely higher numbers, we need that extra teacher. But both of the interviews we had today were pretty amazing, actually. So I think we're heading in a, in the right direction. We're looking for something a little bit different, you know? We definitely, with the challenges that we have this past year with 4K, you know, we have some things that are kind of priorities for us. And, you know, especially when it comes to mindset, working, how we work and collaborate with each other. And how we're willing to step outside the box and provide our students with new opportunities and find unique ways to meet their needs. So we do still have an open library media specialist position. We're kind of on hold with that for a little bit, but as that evolves, I'll keep you updated on that. And then lastly, this is the time of year where I usually provide you with AGR or achievement gap reduction program numbers as required by DPI. But since we missed a whole quarter of school, they said, you know, they had two questions that they wanted us to answer. I provided that for you in the board packet. They wanted to know any progress that students made for the end of the year goals. So I was pretty general in my response to that question. You know, obviously the teachers have daily formative assessments that, you know, they conduct, which help them know how to plan for the next day, the next week, the next month. But the students did not get any formal assessments, because obviously that usually happens in May. So there wasn't anything there that we, that was noteworthy. And then they just wanted a general statement on our response to COVID-19. So what happened, our experience, our response. So I highlighted a couple of things there as well. This is just something that I will have to submit to them. I'm not sure what they will do with that exactly, but they just want record that we talked about it and just as an end of the year wrap-up. And then the last thing in your packet was the template that I used to put together the contract renewal for AGR. If I hear you know, so this is our new year. I changed quite a bit, actually, for many of the grade levels, specifically kindergarten and first grade. I, in the five years that I've kind of overseen this program, I've come to realize that, you know, obviously putting all your eggs in one basket doesn't seem to really demonstrate any kind of growth whatsoever. And there's so many small things that kids in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, ninth grade that are also noteworthy, if not more noteworthy than just a task that they sit down and take at the computer. So I wrote the goals a little bit differently and I use different criteria that the teachers already use in the classroom. You know, and some of those criteria that are listed and bulleted there for those grade levels, some hold more weight than others in the classroom. You know, if a first grader is struggling with, you know, sight words, that's something that they would wanna practice more so than, you know, their computerized tests that they take, that gives them a different number. So there's just, I don't know, I, I'm hoping that this will give us, give me especially a better way to kind of look at the growth of the students. Because I think there's so much more that can be captured in early learning that our previous goals didn't even scratch the surface on. So any question on any of those AGR things? Kind of a lot there, but I don't have any to read through all of that.
Katie, yeah, you say that the summer school is down 25% normally. I mean, what, what does our normal summer school numbers look like?
We are probably closer to like 150.
Yeah.
You say 150?
Yeah.
Yeah. About the third.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just curious.
Well, a lot of it involved the play and everything, so. Which is something that can be done virtually.
Actually, there's lots of leadership to high venture.
Yeah.
Do you just, uh, class?
What was?
Leadership to high venture.
Yeah, 'cause I know personally on my internet at home, if Knox was on, Lynn's could be on. I certainly could be on. So we had to pick and choose who was more important, you know? If Knox had a Google Meet, well then Lynn's had to make sure she didn't have a Google Meet. But that's just the way it is, you know?
And I can be anticipated that, I can, we're all feeling that, you know? So we sent out the virtual registration. We didn't know if we were gonna get 10, we didn't know if we were gonna get 100, or anything in between. Because it's kind of exhausting too, trying to keep up with all of that and make it work from the same household. And, you know, families just wanted a break from that, so.
Katie, what's your feedback from the teachers with respect to the achievement gap reduction? Are they giving, are they giving a feeling for the students and whether or not they're getting it or not and whether they're not progressing? I, I understand we can't do the, oh, we love to take tests, but, but just the feeling of the abilities and skills of the students through the eyes of the teachers? How is that coming back to you?
I would always, I always go back to the premise of AGR and, you know, obviously it's to close the achievement gap. But it was based off the premise of maintaining small class sizes. And I know that's definitely a huge thing that I get feedback on all the time, is class size and how important that is. And, you know, the teachers, I don't wanna say they're not focused on these things. But, you know, it's easy, the feedback that I'm getting is all the small individual growth that the student is getting. And, you know, the milestones that they're able to achieve that maybe aren't even epidemic-related at all. Maybe it's communication-related for a kindergarten or first grade student, or maybe it's problem-solving related. So I, I guess the feedback that I get is that it's really hard to write goals that are meaning, you know, that are meaningful enough to show the kind of growth that you can see because of the class sizes. You know, I get positive feedback on the class sizes, but, you know, there's so many other factors that it's really hard to nail down and what exactly.
But the class sizes tends to foster a more, a closer personal relationship between the teacher and the student. It looks like where there is a bond there, there is a knowledge of what's going on with that student and whether or not they are getting something out of their educational experience here or not. And that's, I guess what I'm looking for is a, you know, we're making progress.
Oh, yeah.
We just, we just don't know how much progress.
Yeah, and I think it's just what you measure too, you know? I think, you know, talk to any kindergarten teacher, they can tell you how many students know five letters, 10 letters, seven letters. You know, they know like down to the smallest detail of what the students are able to know, you know, do. And that helps them plan for where to guide them next. But again, you look at a kindergarten student and every kindergarten student is so different based on their prior experiences, their prior knowledge, their exposure to different things. Yeah, so that's a hard question to answer because it's got a lot of moving parts. But the feedback on the program itself that I get from the teachers is positive. It's just how do we accurately measure what we wanna measure, what matters? And yet, you know, stay true to the program in and of itself.
Anything else, Katie?
No, that's it for me.
Any questions for Katie? Okay, we'll keep going. Business managers' finance bulletin report, that would be you, Jason.
So I sent along your package, summary budget for next year. This is probably the most inaccurate budget possible. As you all know, no one really knows what's gonna happen next year, the year after. So what I did was I left all the revenues the same as this year. This budget is basically allowing us to start spending money in July, that's why you're approving it. Really what is updated in this budget is our expenses. So we updated all the salaries, 'cause that's all done. We updated all the insurance information that's done. And we updated some of our known expenses for our construction projects. That's really what this budget is the startup. There again, it's really preliminary. We don't have any guidance right now on really what the state or the feds are gonna do. So that's where we're at with the budget. I can, I gave you guys a summary, actually, on tonight's and one I sent in the packet. So basically, the increases that you see are basically the salary increases. Except for the high school where the construction project is being, you know, funded early. We are taking a big chunk of, a chunk of money out of our fund balance to give our construction projects that you guys approved. And we will probably end up taking more on our fund balance and less out of Fund 46. Just because I know that they are trying to look at fund balances mostly. And our fund balance is considered very healthy. So that is where we're at. I can certainly go page or page from the budget if you, if you guys would like. Or if you'd like, if you have specific questions, I can answer them. It's really up to you guys. Like I said.
You also answer the other.
Yeah, I'd be like you for most of the time. So.
Here's a number, uh, six.
Really, at this point, it's basically a whole bit of prayer for this one. It really is. I, I think just from what I've heard and other business managers talking and that kind of stuff, states were gonna be okay. One, we have Democratic governor. Two, the state's tax revenues were lowered, but they bounced back up in May a little bit. So, you know, they might back, bounce up a little bit more in June, that'll tell us, you know, what we're, what kind of trend we're looking at. What's, is the scariest part is the feds. That is what concerns, I think, every business manager, including myself. What are the feds gonna do? Are the feds going to leave schools alone? Are they going to chop certain programs? Are they going to, you know, I think it all depends. I think if President Trump has a shot, he might not change too much until after the election. If he doesn't have a shot, what does he have to lose? You've got the Secretary of Education, not exactly a fan of public schools. What's she gonna do? So it, it's really, that's where the scariest is for a person in my position. And as you know, most of our federal funding funds special ed. So we already take, well, approximately $941,000 out of our Fund 10, Fund Special Ed. If they start cutting, you know, the federal programs, what, you know, how much more are we gonna take? It's our balance act. And like I said, right now, there's no guidance, there's nothing.
So with the Secretary of Education who comes out of the charter school sector. So with the Secretary of Education who comes out of the charter school, um, sector, being the Secretary of Education, we're now in a COVID scenario where all Kristen Warner schools, for the most part, are closed. We don't think that, we're not going to see a increase in charter school funding? I, I think this is probably the perfect time for that, if I were, if I were, um, if, if I were in their shoes.
Yeah. And directly from public schools, do it.
Correct.
Yeah, and they're not going to get more, so, um, it'll, it'll be, it'll be interesting. Yeah. So that's, that's really where we're at, the, the budget process.
But that will be a really important communication piece moving forward, because should that process start to happen and then we know that, it will be important to educate our community about what is actually happening. Because if we can talk about Title Nine, and we can talk about all these titles, nobody has a clue. Nobody has a clue that we need to take X amount of money from our federal funds to pay for this. And all this, you know, because you know how it's going to be laid out there, like. So, um, I mean, Jason, that's right to be, be cautious about how we move forward. But again, I would, I strongly encourage us to watch that closely, because we may need to be very proactive in educating, should they start whittling away, if you will, at programs that help students that are already, um, in trouble.
Anyone have any questions on the preliminary budget?
No, that you can answer that.
Yeah, it really is that. With the packet that I handed you guys tonight, um, this played, uh, the very first item that is, actually, is the approval of Fund Ten, Fund Twenty-Sub, Transfer. Um, I have approximately nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars is what we will need to move from our general to our special ed, Fund Twenty-Sub. For this year's budget. The other item I have on there is our Fund Ten Transfer to Fund Forty-Six. When you guys approve the budget back in October, you guys approve the, uh, moving seventy-five thousand, and that's what I'm still recommending is us moving the seventy-five thousand. Any questions on those two numbers? Okay.
All right.
In the packet that I sent you also, um, I sent you, uh, an addition to the handbook for COVID-nineteen. This is my attempt, uh, I'm, I'm doing more of the employee side than the student side. Uh, so this is my attempt, um, with, kind of with an addition to our handbook for, for COVID-nineteen. I did not create a lot of this. Um, I use a lot of resources, um, I have Elizabeth in here. Uh, and then I made it sort of in form of our, you know, taking from our Ed and Beans and, uh, from our local, you know, and all that kind of stuff. It's, I think, a very, I can't say this. It's a document for now, but as Nick was saying, it can change in two weeks. It can change with more information, uh, but we're using this as our starting point.
Jason, I just had, I had a question, but I wasn't quite understanding it.
Yep.
Uh, the Oklahoma School District Employee COVID-nineteen Action.
Yep.
It says, the Oklahoma School District employees are returning to Oklahoma School District, work locations must be screened for COVID. Is that, i- i- is that for once they have to, are we either screening them, or is that?
Nope.
Okay, so if that's anybody that, if we open up, let's say, we open up in, let's say, September. Everybody's going to be screened, right?
Yep.
Screening is different than testing, though, I don't know if you realize that.
What?
Screening is different than testing.
Well, that's what I'm, that, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, so once they get that screening.
Yep.
And they're going to have to isolate at home until they get their test results, correct?
So you are in the section.
I'm trying to understand this.
Yep, so which, which, let's start with this, which, the screening for COVID-nineteen, is that the section or anything?
I'm very curious.
The screening.
Yep, got it, okay. So basically, this is, here's the questionnaire. It's a.
Like the moment, yeah, the question of the moment center, basically.
So have you been in contact with anyone that's had COVID? Have you had, so if they answer yes to any of those questions, then there's an action.
Okay, when you say screen.
It's the questionnaire.
You're talking, okay, you're talking something different than, okay.
Yes, it's not, we're asking anyone to ask, we're not asking them to go take a test.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's like a one test type thing.
Okay, and then one other question, if somebody leaves the district, because I'm wondering about this, because we tend to leave the state.
Yep.
They have to be, you're quarantined for working on site for fourteen days, couldn't they just go get a test?
No, because it takes that up to two weeks.
Why couldn't you just go get a test when you come back?
Some of the places, they won't even give you that. But we don't, I mean, that's the fluid part of the document.
But I mean, there's, I mean, Eric, like, my daughter just got one immediately, you know, she had a little, like, nothing happened, but she went to a free place and got one. Just, they just do it. Can't you go get a, a free test? Can you go get a free test when you get back and get your negative result?
The trouble is.
Or positive?
You could not have incubated. I mean, the, the reason that people say, you know, and it, and quarantining or just self-quarantining, self-quarantining doesn't mean you, you know, can't leave your house. It's just that you pay attention to who you're with and what your symptoms are, and if you have any fever or if you, you know, because most of the symptoms come within two to five days of exposure. Well, you could have been exposed the last day you were someplace. That's why a test when you get back wouldn't show it yet, even if you were going to get it five days later. So they suggest fourteen days is usually, you know, the longest, but most are two to five days if somebody's going to come down with something. So that's why they do it. And testing, unless you're testing every single day, you don't know if somebody, if that shouldn't really give you confidence, I guess, which is why the president has everybody tested every single day around him.
I think I know what you're saying now, but I, I think, I think if you're, she's, yeah, I think that they're, they don't get tested. They have, sometimes they'll have to get tested every single day because COVID doesn't even show up into their system. That's why they're giving you this bandwidth. Take the symptom part away and just say, do I have COVID? If I went in, if I was traveling somewhere, I could go in, the day I get back and get tested to be negative, but three days later, I could be positive.
So, yeah, you could have picked it up while you, before you, when you got home, or you could have picked it up there, but it just didn't, you didn't, it's kind of like a.
Yeah, it could be anywhere, like, that's your point, Pat, yes. It could have been after you got home too, but.
I mean, that, that's anybody, I mean, you, you can get tested and, and then go shopping after and you don't know where you picked it up.
Yes, yep.
Well, it's probably a distinction we should probably make in terms of definition, uh, the difference between screening and testing. The other thing I was looking for as I was going through the, um, COVID-nineteen action, I was looking for daily temperatures, and I found it on the very last page.
Yep.
Now, it's not listed anyplace else in there, I would, I would hope that we could probably.
I think, yeah, I thought it was two.
I was looking for specifically, I did not find it exactly where we got to the last page.
Yeah, I know it's our daily action.
I think it was before that.
Our daily action.
The other question I had about that is who's taking it and how are they taking it? Are they using an infrared packet?
So every staff person every day will, has to take it every morning?
Yes, so there's a good question on how. We are looking, our insurance company, um, M three is actually coming out with a software program that is available to us. And basically, we are going to rely on, and here again, this is where everything can change in a second. We are going to rely on the employees themselves to report their own temperature and answer their own questions off of a cell phone app. So every day, they'll report their temperature and then answer certain questions, like, and the general questions are, have you been in contact with anyone with COVID? You know, all those pretty much damn questions, we go to the doctor, that's what they ask. If they answer yes, or if they enter a temperature that is too high, then certain people get notified and then it sort of starts a chain reaction.
Are we going to apply for the, I think it's through the state, I think it's through the state, remember right? Or maybe it's through the DPI, we can get three, um, handheld. Are we going, we have to apply for it, so are we going to do that?
Yeah, I have an accumulating.
Because those are the only ones we would want to use, and we don't want any hands-on, any touching, any close proximity.
I have an email to accumulate.
We've been doing that at the local center for the employees, so it seems to be working good.
So whoever's working the area, they.
Someone else does it, you don't have to come in front, just take it.
I have a question on the requirements.
Yep.
It says, you know, da, 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 work locations except when in a private office, closed classroom, what do you mean by closed classroom?
So what I meant by that is basically, if a teacher is in a classroom by themselves, at that point.
With students?
No.
In between class.
Oh.
So i- it's basically, if you're in isolation, um, you're not, you need to wear a mask. So I'm in my office, there's no one else in my office, I don't have to wear a mask at that time. Now, like, when Nick, in fact, there's a sign right outside my office, says, please, well, first of all, please wear a mask, then I'll please announce yourself, but I have, so I have time to put my, my mask on. So when Nick comes into my office, basically says, you know, Jason or whoever comes in, you know, and then I put my mask on, he has a mask already, and then vacation you on. But if I'm in my office by myself, then we feel that there's no need to wear a mask at that time.
So teachers are going to have the mask on for quite a long time. Because if they're following, you know, some of our scenarios, you're going to be with the same group of kids all the time.
So you still, we still want to maintain the social distancing plus the mask, is that correct? So I'm just thinking about this, how does a teacher say, oh, Johnny, I think number three is wrong there, but I can't get close enough to, to show you?
Well, I think within reason, right?
Okay.
So within reason is something that we will become familiar with, right? It's the same concept with coaching, right? Within reason, um, do we want you to give the student a hug? No, but if Johnny's having problems with number three, I don't want you to teach him from a distance of six feet. If you go over there with it, reason, you get them corrected. It's all about time, exposure, and all of that stuff. But this is where people need to become comfortable with that, because we will have teachers that are locked in. You told me this, and I, I don't want to create up all the fear and all this, but I also want them to just acknowledge that where you can, do it, right? Just like in the middle of the, right? We were down there the other day, lady was working out, she was cleaning her stuff, and I'm going to be all competent, like, putting the mask for more model behavior, right? And I think that's what we need to get to with our staff, right? Because there are some situations, all of Katie's teachers, what do you do with a kid that needs one-on-one help? I can't socially distance from a child that needs one-on-one help. So within reason, understand the context, understand the situation. But if I'm, if I'm a fly ed teacher and we're playing kickball, yep, we need to be, because we can, period.
On a national call, they said something really great, they said, for everything that we need to do, we need to, there's a decision that has to be made, and we have to weigh out what the risk is. And then we need to ask ourselves, is it worth the risk or is it not? So as a teacher, is it worth the risk, you know, of any exposure? Or as a coach, is it worth the risk, is it not? Is it not really that big of a deal and we don't need to do it this way? So we just need to, like, that's where I think locally we need to decide those things. Is it, what, what, what is the risk? Who is at risk? Is it worth the risk?
You have the technology in the classroom, those from the e-screens, uh, to be able to share and demonstrate at distance. And, like, you know, if someone's not getting it, you can pop it up on the screen and, you know, the whole class can learn.
Well, we all know.
So the how.
The whole opposite, I mean.
The how is it for us?
You know, I mean, it's, I will agree with that. In teaching, sometimes it's much more productive if I just sit next to them for ninety seconds, you know.
Can I?
Yeah, I would reiterate Jason's comment, though, about this document. We don't know, we don't know, and we're going to learn a lot of stuff. So this will be a regular thing that we look at and respond and adopt, and, I mean, we just have to become comfortable with kind of evolving information and ways of doing things.
I think, though, Jason, you're, you sort of come from a medical model a little bit, and screening is what we just knew automatically wasn't testing. But I think it's very misunderstood by people who don't use it all the time, so maybe you could say screening through a questionnaire, so that, so that people understand what.
What's screening?
Yeah, what, what kind of screening we're doing.
What we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
The same thing, the same thing applies for athletes, right? We're asking athletes to screen themselves, because the last thing that we want is an athlete to show up and then have all, then, then we're put in the situation where you definitely have. I think it's just a good point, in general, of, again, talking about what that actually means versus what this testing protocol is.
Okay, Jason, anything else?
I think that is it.
Any further questions or comments for Jason? Okay, we'll move on. Special ed report and Pathfinder update, Katie Horn.
I am meeting with a group of special ed teachers next week, kind of brainstorm, um, and discuss what next year could like, could look like. I'm thinking we're going to just kind of have a full restructure of special ed and what has happened in the past and what will be happening this year. A couple of different ideas, I'm also meeting with the special ed director of St. John Bay. Just to kind of, like, mix up, and he's in his principal meetings, we want to kind of be on the same page within, um, the special ed of our districts too, so. It's just kind of a big question mark at this point. Yeah, and our audit for, under the special ed audit this year, I'm got pushed back to twenty-twenty-two, so, um, I guess that's good, because obviously with COVID and online everything, it worked out to be a little crazy, and deadlines were a little crazy, trying to get home parents and getting them to meet virtually was difficult, so I'm glad the audits were getting pushed back. Um, for Pathfinder, it's also going to be interesting, Lexi will be gone beginning of the year on maternity leave. And like Nick said, bringing in somebody from the outside is probably not going to happen, so we'll have to get creative with what that looks like. Um, the good thing is, a lot of the kids actually did more work at home than they did in school. We got a lot, a lot, a lot of work back from the kids, um, that flopped off and talked to their friends the whole time when they were in school. So I think a lot of them, at the beginning of the year, will probably work from home on the packets, and the rest of the kids will have to be, be our plan for, but, um, like I said, a lot of, I'm looking to hopefully graduate some early and get a lot of work from the beginning of the year, so. I don't have a lot, because everything is kind of over there.
Yeah. Questions for Katie? All right, Liv Elgoma, monthly update, Teal.
The All-America city finalist presentations were supposed to be held before the end of June, and we declined, obviously. And they postponed it to August, we then also declined, just because that our time is not needed to be spent elsewhere. Now, this last week, they announced that they are canceling that and going all virtual for the first time. So they, I guess, are trying to navigate what that looked like. So we have a call with them this week. The virtual presentations in front of the national jury will be held August 17th through 19th. And so we got a huge packet, I didn't go through yet, but we'll be on a call this week. And I've been trying to ask some others to be listening ears for that, so they defeat. But also, if it's not worth our time at this point, we then decline. And it's great to be a finalist, one of eleven, but I also, or one of, sorry, I think it's twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I thought it was, yeah.
It is quite an honor, and we've, I've been attending some of their calls. The network is, is amazing of the people that you're connected with, especially during COVID-19, the things that we're learning, and you have access to, would be really great for Elgoma. But I also am realistic of what that entails. So more to come on that, but we're back in the, back in the game under the virtual option, so. At the last board meeting, I mentioned to the Elgoma School District and our, and our community being chosen along with the Fox Valley region to help inform the CDC through the WIN Network. We are a peace center community in our country through the WIN Network, and the WIN Network is working with the CDC to develop a blueprint for the United States in response to COVID. That will be out in fall, I believe, for guidance for the United States in the next ten years and what, what communities can do to recover, because we know this is going to be a long recovery in a lot of different ways. And Nick and I had a really deep interviews with them, and then I was charged to have a series of interviews, their community conversations more or less, virtually through Zoom, supported with the technology through the Local Voices Network. And I have completed three of them so far, and I truly am speechless. The people that were invited are people that I, I know, but very different lenses of our community. And at some point, this will be public for, you know, all of you to listen to. Right now, we are not making it totally public, just because the, the anonymous part of that is going to be critical. We live in a very small community, and I know, even though we don't use names or that sort of thing, but information that's shared could very much, you know, we could identify who those individuals are. So at this time, they're sharing. It's based on COVID-19, so I facilitate the conversation through questions. The questions are very much like, what has Elgoma done well in response to COVID-19? And where, you know, where do we need to see improvements? And where do we need help and support going forward? And the reason that they are looking to us is because they know that we have very good best practices in regards to health, wellbeing, and equity. But also, they know that we listen to others when, when we're not doing something very well and we have response to that. So again, I'm, there's just going to be a lot of outcomes from, I think, just little conversations. And hopefully, we can have some more of you all involved as well. Let's see, we have a project with UW Madison, I think Nick talked about it a little bit. Abigail Robinson is a paid intern on the project, ironically, there's some synergy there. But we're going to be interviewing our Latinx community and developing some culturally responsive curriculum based on our Latinx community here in Elgoma, so I'm really excited. It's, to me, very cutting edge and something that we can be a partner in. I just think we're going to have that more and more. There's people that look at Elgoma, like, you guys are doing something, how can we partner with you? So that's just another one of those UW Madison, Abigail's coming back full circle to help us and improve some areas. So that's exciting, and more information to come on that. Wolf Den is kicking off with some one-on-ones. So if you're up in the local community, we have one wolf and one pup, and they are doing outdoor activities, and it's been, oh, amazing. We've had community members stop that know our pups and our wolves. Sometimes they give them money to go get ice cream. They'll go into stores, they'll put their fabric masks on, they just, it's like the stories that we're hearing are incredible. And our kids need to see each other in any way, shape, or form. So we're still continuing it, and really proud of our wolf, our, a wolf that has never stopped. We run a number two platform, sometimes we'd see up to thirty faces on the screen. So it was, you know, that's kudos to us, because a lot of after-school programs shut down during COVID-19. During one of our 4K interviews today, individual that we interviewed said that their school district was not ready. And, you know, asked what we did, and we were, we were one-on-one, for the most part. 4K did their own thing, visiting families. But really, truly, I can't iterate that enough, that our school district is really, really on the forefront of being ready. And I can only stress that that's because we're collaborative in nature, and we work together as United Front, and I think that's going to be important going forward. And then lastly, the hydroponic unit, I wanted to give a little shout-out to them. We have three working units right now. Soon, hopefully, to be eight units, I know that's a lot, but Penny is very, very excited. We will be in a network of Lakeshore hydroponic units, working in operation, which will be vitally important for Penny, because she can learn with and from others that are doing the same work. Right now, we're working with the United Methodist Church, who feeds our, the Wolf Den after-school backpack program. That continues in the summer, they're now making meals for our families. So the, the families can either take the ingredients home and make them together as a family, which about seventy-five percent decided to do that. And then there's some others that just come and get the already-made meals. But for every meal, they have fresh produce. It's also being utilized in our senior meal program, so the ADRC just sent out that they're going to be doing some lunches Monday through Friday for sixty and older. So anybody can come to the United Methodist Church, and they can receive lunch. And if, you know, they will also get some fresh produce made here at our school district. So just really trying to find some different areas of need right now during the summer months. And, and so I'm really excited about that. That's it.
Excellent. Always nice to hear from you, Teal.
Well, I'm trying to be positive, I told Nick today, I was just like, he was making fun of my jacket. So I said, there's little stars here, let's be positive, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that's, we have, we have all the tapes, it's going to be tough. But there are people that are looking at us, and the national, Nick has been asked to be on some calls. I know he's been very busy, so he's not been able to attend. But this is a time that we can really tell people what it's like in our rural community and try to get some support that we need, make our voices heard. So I'll be proud of to be part of that.
I agree. Okay, I don't think we had any committees. Moving to other specific items for discussion, school board convention. What do we think of that? That's so far in the future, it's hard to.
Actually, I think with education being so up in the air right now, we don't know if they're going to be in our schools. We don't know if the kids are probably going to have to wear masks, will they be able to stay at the playground, stay six feet away from kids, and then they might have a convention, I think that's laughable.
Well, I think right now, we're talking about it simply to reserve hotel rooms, correct? So if we could do that with a ability to back out, you know, we're not, we're not signing up. You know, I hear what you're saying, Pat. I mean, how can anybody even think about presenting or gathering, I mean, so.
And basically, they are talking about, the WSP board is talking seriously about what to, to even have the convention, have a virtual convention.
That ought to be well-attended. Send a team of vendors to people.
It is a topic, but, you know, I just, I just can't see myself wearing a mask that long.
I, I would be shocked if they have it, just because.
Yeah, I would too.
The rural schools conference in the fall, all that stuff would be canceled already.
I'm sure we'll talk about it the next season meeting, since, you know, Sue sits on the board.
I would agree with you, that would be, you know, hypocrisy.
A stretch, yeah.
Do all this stuff and then, let's get together and convention all.
Absolutely.
Not unless there's a lot of medical breakthroughs.
Yeah. So do nothing, I guess, is what we're saying right now, Jason.
Can you find out if these hotels will let you?
Book later?
Yeah, we have, we have the note of time, ten days.
Oh, wow.
Oh, well.
So I have the sheets for closed, for the selecting our days. So if you are, we'll book them. I don't, we can't see it happening at all either.
And it's not just, it's not just the conference. The hotels are operating under totally different rules nowadays, and their capacities are a lot further down than they've ever been before, as a result. I, I just, I don't see that.
Yeah, we have the note of time, ten days, if we want to cancel.
That's a different story.
Yeah, I mean, we, it doesn't hurt us, I guess, to, to do it. Okay, but we do need to schedule a transportation committee meeting to discuss the busing. That will be an interesting meeting, so that would be you, Dave, Ann, and Mickey. So, and what is.
If, if it's all right, wherever in my place, I'll get it set up.
Do you, do we have a timeframe that we need to have it in, Jason?
Well, I think we need to talk about that, because having it next week, I don't necessarily know if that lends us any insight, right? So I don't necessarily know if we have to have it. I think it might be good to meet, but then also then say, we're not making any decisions until.
We have more information, sure.
A lot is going to change in sixty days, and that piece, we have to get right. We have to get that right.
Might I suggest a Zoom meeting for that, as opposed to having Dave sanitize his house for, for visitors and all of that?
I would, I mean, I don't know what you guys, but I would like to actually get something in writing from Jeff at the R, about what are they going to do? Because when we get that, then I think we need to hand them, this is what you will do. And I, I, I know for a fact that Joe Kitchens and Nydrin, who's the head of joint finance, that is one of their biggest pieces. Because it has to be right. It can't, it can't fail. Because if that doesn't work, all of this planning is for, right? So my suggestion would be to reach out to Jeff and say, Jeff, what are you currently thinking? And have them submit that to us, say by July fifteenth. We review it, and then we say, okay, here's what we would like to meet. And then meet, and then meet again, because that's not, that's not going to be an easy decision. It's really not. So I think there's a lot of moving parts there, to have a meeting right now in July for what we have no clue. I don't know if that serves us well. But I, I mean, I wouldn't have thought, so that's just, that's just what I'm thinking right now.
Well, I think that would be a good start, see what they've been thinking about. And what do you think, Dave? Give them.
Yeah, I, I'm having a real hard time understanding Nick and John talking. Nick, maybe we could discuss it tomorrow and decide what we want to do?
Yeah, yeah, I think basically, to just summarize, he's suggesting that if we have it too soon, we're not going to have enough information to have any good decisions.
Right, right.
And it's probably going to take more than one meeting, so. All right, so, so we won't set anything at this point.
And that's Ann, myself, and Nikki, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a tough group, Dave, you better be ready.
Okay.
Yes, because I'm not ready.
All right, we will move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May eighteenth, 2020.
I still move, Nancy President.
Okay, got a motion by Dave, got a second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were in our packet, as well as those presented to us tonight.
So moved?
I'll second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joanne. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We, we don't need a roll call for revisions, do we?
And there were no revisions until July now.
Okay, so we do not, so we can just bypass that. These next three, though, will be roll call. And so Dave, I will start with you when we get to the roll call vote, okay? So I need a motion to approve Fund Ten transfer to Fund Twenty-seven in the approximate amount of nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Also move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ann, seconded by John. Roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Fund Ten transfer to Fund Forty-six in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
I still move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by John. Roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes, motion carries. I need to, a motion to approve the preliminary 2020-21 budget for eight million, eight hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
So moved.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Ann? Joanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
I also say yes, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to approve the donation from DKREA, Door County Retired Teachers, Retired Educators Association, in the amount of two hundred ninety-two dollars for the lunch program.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, motion made by John, seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a, a motion to approve the donation from Land O' Lakes in the amount of five hundred dollars for the lunch program.
Also move.
Motion made by Joanne.
Second.
Seconded by Mick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation from Gary and Mary Brightlow in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the lunch program.
Also move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revision to the employee handbook.
With the fine screening versus testing, is the one change that I have. The other change that I have that was mentioned was somewhere in there, going about temperature checks.
Clarification of that. Okay, with those changes to the revision, do I have a motion?
All move.
Okay, motion made by Ann.
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne.
Can I just ask one question, Jason, on this?
Sure.
On this screening, who do you think? As, on this screening, who determines who, who, you do the screening and who gets, who looks at it? It's a questionnaire, you said, right?
Yeah.
Human resources.
And, and.
It'll go to.
Human resources.
It goes to.
So, if, if you're, if you're not at risk, so let's say you answered don't follow questions and your temperature is normal, it's recorded so that we have proof that you answered it.
Okay.
But it doesn't go anywhere, I mean, it's just recorded. If you answered yes to any questions.
Okay.
And/or your temperature is above, I think it's a hundred and one point four.
Hundred point four. We don't want a hundred one, do we?
Then it will go to the appropriate people then.
Okay, so, so that's when you say employees are screened but not cleared to work yet, there, there is a little red flag on their questionnaire.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And that's a phone app you're going to be using, is that what that is?
I think that's what we're looking for. This is here yet, not set install.
But that's one way.
We got to launch a little demo of the, the screen app that M3 is coming up with. Uh, so they're coming up with this app for all their clients, basically. So we're a little early into that, but.
But it will be confidential as well.
It will be confidential, it's very secure, yep. Even if they get tested and we get results, uh, that will only come to my office and that's it. So there, there's certain protocols that are already in place for most of this stuff. Even, let's take COVID out of it, even if it's other medical stuff. I mean, basically, it's the same principle, um, that we'll follow for COVID also. But, yes, so that's, but it's all evolving. I mean, it's just a, is there a framework where we're starting?
We may have this on every agenda.
Yeah, same with me.
Okay, we have a current motion and second for, um, the revision with the changes that Jason mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request for future agenda items. Okay, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one, C, E, F and I, for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing resignations.
So moved.
All second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joanne. Roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yep.
Pat?